Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're resuming the committee at a whole of the Revere City Council. And at this time, I'm going to call on our honorable state senator, Anthony Petroselli, to address the council and discuss the fiscal year 2014 state budget. And I know he's going to tell us we're getting a couple extra million dollars because we're such good people. Senator, Paul's push button.
Thank you very much, Council President Novoselfsky, and through you to the rest of the members of the city council, and through them to the citizens of Revere. It's great to be back again this year and talk about a few issues. I will touch on the fiscal '14 budget, which my colleagues in the Senate and I will begin debate on Wednesday of this week. But I thought it was a good idea to maybe start by talking briefly about the transportation finance legislation that is currently in a conference committee, working out some small differences. The transportation finance bill is a very important piece of legislation to the greater Boston community at large because of the fiscal needs of the MBTA. If you recall, last year, we plugged a budget gap for the MBTA to avoid major fare increases in service cuts. The MBTA is again in a deficit heading into fiscal '14 and requires another infusion of significant new revenues in order to avoid what they have, when I say "they," the MBTA board has talked about, a need to increase fares by way of 19% if we do not address the issue of need. So Speaker DeLeo, Representative Reinstein, and myself have worked out a piece of legislation, transportation finance, that we believe addresses the needs of the MBTA. And there are five categories that we believe the transportation finance bill will address. The MBTA budget deficit, which is one. Regional transit authorities, which we really don't care much about around here, but for the folks out in western Massachusetts, the North Shore, the Cape. You know, in order to make our colleagues want to support a revenue package that helps the MBTA, they have to get something out of it as well. So the regional transit authorities are a major component to forward fund them in the transportation bill. Chapter 90, which is a very important piece, it's what finances road projects and municipalities all throughout the Commonwealth. Under the proposed legislation, chapter 90 funding is going to be increased by 50% for all communities, including the city of Revere. So the statewide number is being proposed increase from $200 million to $300 million for fiscal '14. I spoke to Mayor Rizzo about that. He's very excited about the opportunity to get a 50% increase in chapter 90 funds for roads in the city of Revere. Mass dot operational expenses. You know, back in the big dig era, there was a practice of paying for operational expenses with capital money, borrowed money in the capital program. It's a lot of times described like buying groceries on a credit card. It's not good fiscal policy. Under the legislature's proposed transportation finance bill, we hope to wean them off of that practice within three years. The governor's proposed revenue package would have done it, I think, in five years. So we're hoping to move away from that unsound fiscal practice in a shorter period of time. And there's a need for capital projects to move Massachusetts' transportation infrastructure into the 21st century. We hope to create the ability for more capital projects to advance at a speedier rate. I want to touch on briefly how we fund this and how that differs from what the governor had proposed back in January. You know, the governor proposed a very ambitious plan, and I don't think there is an individual, at least in the legislature, that objects to where he would spend the new revenue. He has clearly and thoughtfully presented a need to invest in early childhood education, higher education, some senior service and social programs in the state budget that through some of our lean years suffered through a series of cuts. The question of how we are able to pay for the transportation finance plan is what really there has been some disagreement about. And I just want to outline a couple of the real important points that I've seen a lot of people express their support for that revenue plan. But the reality is, you know, we ran some numbers. I'll take a family of four, because, by the way, the plan that the governor proposed would increase the income tax, would decrease the sales tax, and eliminate about 40 tax exemptions that are currently right now in law. The problem that we've seen with what he proposed, and again, it's roughly a $2 billion net new revenue proposal. A family of four making $100,000 adjusted gross income would pay over $1,000 in new taxes. Now, we know through some polling that there are over 60% of families in Massachusetts that are living paycheck to paycheck. We know that an adjusted gross income for a family of four of $100,000 is probably no longer middle class with the cost of living in greater Boston, in the communities that I represent. And so it is definitely something that we looked at, that weighed heavily on us. We chose to go in a different direction. There's a proposed 3 cent increase in the gas tax in the transportation finance plan that if you drove 20,000 miles with a fairly fuel-efficient car, you would pay an extra 38 bucks per year. Transportation financing via the gas tax is locked in. Constitutionally, any money that is raised via the gas tax has to go towards transportation improvement projects. So we thought it was a very prudent way to go. And by the way, the gas tax has not been increased since 1990. And so while we all know it's a difficult policy discussion to have with our constituents about increasing taxes, we know that it's a real need here in Massachusetts. We have a $15 billion to $20 billion need for road improvements for existing infrastructure in Massachusetts, spread out over a 20-year period. That is derived from a nonpartisan transportation finance commission from 2007. And so we've rolled our sleeves up to try to come up with a plan that raises revenue but doesn't reach too far into the pockets of our constituents in all of our districts and all across Massachusetts, because we recognize that it's still, it's a difficult time for people. And so that is a major difference. I might add also, you know, this past summer and fall, we saw through the election process that the electorate widely embraced the idea to make folks that could afford to pay a little bit more for the things we know we need in education, innovation, and infrastructure. It's okay to make people that can afford to pay a little more, pay a little more. And why do I say that? Because President Obama, Senator Warren, ran on that message. It was widely embraced by the people in Revere, in my Senate district, and all throughout Massachusetts. But I want to add that that was also defined and qualified by those candidates as $250,000 a year or more, people making $250,000 a year or more. That was the number that was defined. And eventually, by the way, the Congress in January moved that number up to over $400,000 a year, people that are going to pay more in federal taxes. So asking folks to pay $1,000 or more a year for people that are a family of four that make $100,000 a year is a tough pill to swallow. We chose to move in a different direction that we think addresses the needs of the Commonwealth from a transportation finance standpoint. I'll move on briefly to the fiscal 2014 budget, which my colleagues and I and the senator are taking up on Wednesday. There are a couple of points that I'd like to draw on. Before I do that, I want to talk briefly about fiscal '13, talk a little bit about the condition of the economy and our state finances. We've had a slow but steady recovery the past couple of fiscal years. If you remember, I come to the council to make this presentation every year, and a few years ago, we were in a series of difficult budgets where we were making cuts. There were cuts to local aid that were very painful. There were a lot of programmatic cuts that were very difficult to deal with. We had federal monies that really helped us out get through some of the lean times. But the past couple of fiscal years have been a lot better. They've been a lot better from a revenue standpoint. Fiscal '13, I think, is a real snapshot of a slow but steady recovery. Our first four months of fiscal '13 revenues in Massachusetts were actually below benchmark, which caused a lot of concern as we were watching it. The governor had to make a 9C cut to downwardly adjust our revenue expectation for fiscal '13. But actually, after he's done that, the past number of months has actually seen increases in revenues. And so you hear all kinds of numbers. You know, you hear that there's a $500 million surplus in Massachusetts right now. When you adjust it to where we originally started with our expected revenues from a year ago, we're actually within almost, we're in less than 1% of what our revenue expectation was. Right now, it looks like we'll end fiscal '13 with about a $50 million surplus. So we were real close to the number of what our revenue expectation was. But I think fiscal '13 shows that there's still some volatility out there from month to month or from quarter to quarter. And so we're trying to be careful this year with our budgeting for fiscal '14. So as we move into fiscal '14, the highlights that I know you might all be interested in in the area of chapter 70 funding, of local aid funding, is that from fiscal '13 to fiscal '14, we're looking at last year's chapter 70 number of about $46.2 million to increase at least to 47, maybe to $48 million. Local aid is about around the same right now. The House number was a couple of hundred thousand dollars better for unrestricted local aid than the Senate Ways and Means version. So we're going to work to try to get some of that up in the budget debate this week. But there are a couple of real good stories for some state programming where we're able to make some significant investments in. One I point to is home care. The Senate Ways and Means budget, as proposed, would eliminate the waiting list. Right now, there's a waiting list of about 1,500 deep in Massachusetts for senior citizens for home care services under the proposed budget. It would be eliminated down to zero. The issue of early childhood care that the governor was really pursuing in his budget proposal, we take, I think, a pretty healthy stab at and make investments to take an additional 2,000 kids in Massachusetts off of the waitlist for a voucher for early childcare. And relative to the issue of homelessness, we will add enough money to increase the MRVP vouchers by an additional 1,000 vouchers to try to help with the issue of homelessness here in Massachusetts. So there's a lot more which I will spare you with at this moment, as I like to do every year. I'd like to hear your thoughts, if you have any you'd like to share or any questions. I'll do my best to address them as the council president. Again, thank you for asking me to be here today.
Thank you, Senator. I appreciate it. And I see some hands up, so just let me make a note of who asked. Any else on this side? No. temporary what? Okay. Charlie? No? Okay. Somebody else? Okay. Councilor Correggio, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Put on your mic.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator, thank you for coming before us. I think you guys are trying to do the best you can for what you have. My main concern every day, I've been out through the streets, I've been talking to a lot of people, whether it's coffee shops or in the neighborhood. I've been in most neighborhoods already. Seniors, seniors are on a fixed income. They're really having it hard out there. And what are we doing to make life a little easier for them, far as taxes, home care? I know you addressed home care, which is fine. But I want to hear a little more about seniors on fixed incomes. What are we doing to try to help them out, keep them in their own home if we can, and other services? Senator?
Yes, thank you. I want to point out, I think, how significant the issue of addressing the elder home care waitlist. You know, we all know that as seniors continue to age and their activities of daily living decline, it is both most certainly cost-effective and more humane to have them stay in their home. How often do we hear that seniors want to be able to stay in their home? They don't want to have to go to a nursing home. The waitlist has been 1,500 for a number of years. It actually was over 1,500 in fiscal '13. It was proposed to be 1,500 again. The investment that we're making to reduce that to zero is pretty significant. The investments that we're making in the transportation finance bill are pretty significant for seniors as well, as we try to make sure that the ride, which is a service that a lot of people in the city of Revere take advantage of, is held harmless from significant cost increases or service cuts. That in the last fiscal year, there were some increases to the ride. But the investment to cure the MBTA of over $112 million deficit for this fiscal year, which the transportation finance bill will do, will hopefully aid in seniors and their transportation needs as well.
Yeah, and to add on with that, most important is our veterans, our veterans that served in all wards. I'm really concerned about them. I mean, they served overseas. They have certain diseases that, you know, they have to live with. What are we doing to help out our veterans, whether it's clinics, whether it's services? Can you address that? That's my last question. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that. I'm just trying to flip through my slides here, because I know there were a couple of investments for our veterans. I must say, if I can't find it, the one thing that I can say undoubtedly is that here in Massachusetts, we have the highest standard, which I know the council president can attest to, the best state-funded veterans benefits programs in all of the United States. 5% funding increase for veterans outreach centers and veterans homeless shelters. $125,000 for a fairly new train vets-to-treat vets program, which helps recently returned veterans become behavioral health counselors. Creates a new war memorial line item, which provides grant funding for municipal war memorial restoration and rehabilitation. So we take care of our veterans in Massachusetts. Speaker DeLeo has been a leader and a champion on this for, you know, almost 20 years in the legislature. So they're in good hands, as they should be.
Senator, thank you. Thank you very much. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. As always, it's great to have the senator before us. He brings us up to date as far as what's going on at the state level. Going back to the last governor's race between Baker and the current governor, a lot was said about the ETP cards, you know, this modifying that, there's basically all kinds of illegal activities going on there. House Speaker DeLeo, latest idea was to put pictures on them, which I thought myself was a great idea. But what is going on to modify that? Because the last election three years ago, it's always on talk radio, people know of people, you're in line at a super, in a stop shop, whatever it may be, and you're looking at what is purchased with these cards. And then the latest event is when they had that raid last week, they found all kinds of money, all kinds of ETP cards there, and not one, but many. What is the state doing to address these issues?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Haas. Yeah, that's an issue that I hear about very often. It's widely written about, and particularly by one of the daily newspapers. We have made some reforms in the area of EBT card use. Just two budgets ago, we went in the direction of limiting what you could use the EBT card to purchase with. So, you know, some of the stories about purchases with EBT cards for alcohol, for bail, for cigarettes, that has all been eliminated and disqualified for use in a store that vends those. You can no longer go into a liquor store with an EBT card and buy a six-pack. But there are more reforms in order to make sure that the program is held with the highest integrity, to make sure that the people that really need those services and that assistance get it and get it in a meaningful way. The Senate president, who actually, in a prior life, before she was Senate president, was a chair of Health and Human Services Committee a number of years ago under welfare reform back in the mid-'90s, where there was a first real big programmatic change to create welfare to work, right? And so we have in the Senate a commission that is looking at how do we, what's this next phase of reform look at? The question of whether or not pictures on EBT cards will realize more efficiency and savings, it remains to be seen at this point. I don't know. We're looking at all of those issues. The concept of coming up with a cashless system, so-called, is something that, again, we're looking at, we're trying to look at that in all of those issues, job training and all the issues with not just EBT card, but of any kind of subsidy for families in need and transitional assistance. We're trying to take a holistic approach and make reforms throughout the whole system to make it more efficient. So if we go in a different direction in this budget and not include some of those measures, at least in the Senate version, it's not because we have a blind eye to it, it's because we're looking to maybe take a bigger bite at it with some major reforms in that issue.
Because, as you know, Senator, there's people of great needs, without question, you know, single parents, et cetera, senior citizens, and the people stealing from the system are taking away from these people, without question. And I'm glad to hear what you just said, that the Senate and also the House under Speaker DeLeo is working toward that aim.
I might add as well that, you know, particularly in your lean times, you try to squeeze as much juice out of the lemon as you can, so to speak. So we have made some major advances with reforms for program integrity throughout all the state government, you know, trying to route out Medicaid fraud has realized, you know, a savings of $2 for every dollar invested. Routing out vendor fraud for contractors that serve as vendors for different levels of Massachusetts government has realized significant savings in the tens of millions of dollars over the past year or two in making major investments in program integrity. So I appreciate the issue and the question.
Thank you, Senator.
Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator, in the Governor Romney administration several years back, they were referring to and going to redo a thorough review of the welfare lifers, as they're referred to in the housing assistant, the lifers in housing, welfare recipients who receive housing in the public system. And now I see a month or so ago, Governor Patrick is thinking of something in sort of, some sort of reform and review of the welfare assistance program as to whether these people who are termed lifers, meaning people who make it a lifelong habit of generation to generation, living and growing up within the housing authority. That in itself, a thorough review of that process would help immensely in terms of housing for our veterans. We wouldn't have a veteran coming back to this state in need of housing because we'd have so much of it. I know through the course of just the limited knowledge I have of our system here, I know of many people that are in that system that refer to as lifers in that. And there is no challenge to do elsewhere. You know, there's no challenge to these individuals to pick their lives up and go get a job and be on with it, you know, and better yourself. There's no incentive to do that. The incentive is, we're going to give you housing, we're going to give you food stamps, we're going to give you whatever you need, we're going to give you, CapEx is going to come in and help you with your heating. Well, what else? Why do you even have to get up in the morning? So, and there's a lot of people who've worked so hard their whole life, and now, maybe because of a shortfall or whatever they may be, are limited to what they can do financially. And we don't have the housing to take care of these folks. And that's kind of upsetting, based on the fact that our primary concern is to help those in need, not to enable people to keep being enablers. We want to help people who are in severe need or in dire need. Is there any way that the Senate can help with the governor in pushing this? Because we know it was a war on words with Governor Romney, and I hope Deval Patrick doesn't make it a war on words either. Because once that issue is, and it's a massive, massive undertaking, no question about it, but it's one that's necessary, I think, you know, to audit to free up these housing for these individuals. You know, a guy gives, or a woman goes out, conducts themselves in service capacity, protecting our lives here, and we don't have any means to take care of them when they come back. They come back to no jobs, they come back to, some are hurting, some are physically unable to work. We ought to be able to have housing for them in a dignified manner, not one that they have to call up a politician, go to the VA, go to, you know, plea out their case. We should be receiving them and saying, if you need our assistance, we're here to help you. How can we help the governor get this thing done?
Yeah, the issue of housing is one of the more difficult issues. There's a significant demand in waitlist for any of us that has fielded a constituent request, which I know we all get, for people in seeking some kind of a housing at the subsidized level. We know that it's a challenging issue. The governor had proposed reworking the housing authorities in Massachusetts and making them more regional. It hasn't been terribly well-received by my colleagues up there. But there is energy to try to do something, to create more efficiencies in that process of public housing, to create a better standard of living. He's offered a housing bond bill that is working its way through committee right now. The opportunity to try to make some efforts in reform will present itself in that vehicle as we advance it in the coming months ahead.
Well, like you said earlier, Senator, you said that the doom and gloom of the past couple of years was pretty tough to come before us and tell us the bad news. And fortunately, you said, now we're 50 million plus in the positive side, and maybe when you come back next year, it will be 250 million in the plus. Because I really think that there's something happening out there with our economy, and people are starting to feel more comfortable in spending. So keep up the good work, Senator. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I must say, too, hopefully, at some point in our lifetimes, maybe there'll be an employer with 3,000 new jobs down the road.
We're all betting on it.
Before I ask Counselor Powers, I just want to remind everybody, we have another meeting at 5:45, so stay to the point and make it short, please. Thank you. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Senator, first of all, I want to thank you for your attendance here this evening and the opportunity for you to enlighten us on many of the major issues that are facing the Commonwealth today and our local city. I have two questions. First of all, and maybe I missed your presentation earlier, I was downstairs, chapter 90 money. What do we see coming into the city in any increases? Because one of the most...
50% increase.
50% increase.
Yes.
And that's good news, because when I travel throughout my ward, people are constantly addressing me with regard to infrastructure problems, the sidewalks, streets, things like that, that certainly need attention. And my next question is, as you well know, when you come off of Route 16 and you head down toward Mahoney, aka Bell Circle, a lot of the heavy trucks go down that way, they have to go around Bell Circle to get up on McClellan Highway. And what I'm wondering is, do you see in the foreseeable future any chance of that bridge on Winthrop Avenue at 116 being rebuilt so it could handle the tonnage that would be... down toward Mahoney, AKA Bell Circle, a lot of the heavy trucks go down that way, they have to go around Bell Circle to get up on McLoughlin Highway. And what I'm wondering is, do you see in the foreseeable future any chance of that bridge on Winthrop Avenue at 116 being rebuilt so it could handle the tonnage that would be crossing over it, and crossing over that bridge going right onto the highway and up to the oil farms?
Ira was just waving at me like he might know the answer better than I do. I know they've looked at that for a while, and with the new transportation bond authorization moving through, it might be a project that we could see in the near future.
Well, I think that—
Just so you know, if I may, Councilor, right now, they're working on the State Road Bridge in Beaumont. The next year, they were going to work on the Route 16 at the railroad bridge, the trestle bridge.
I think we're looking at the possibility of a casino coming in. I think that's very important, particularly to get that traffic off of Bell Circle, those big trucks that go around there and take, you know, so much room and tie up traffic. So anything you could do in your capacity as the Senator from our district to facilitate that happening, I know the citizens of this city would certainly appreciate it. Thank you, Senator.
Councilor Zamburo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Senator Petrosely for coming here. It's always an informative presentation of what's going on. I know that most of my colleagues probably know, but I don't know how many of our citizens know, that Senator Petrosely chairs one of the most prestigious committees, is the Chairman of the Financial Services Committee at the State House, which is one of the premier committees, and I just wanted the citizens to know that we're represented by this chairman I appreciate your presentation, and, you know, unfortunately, we're always targeting the poor and the homeless, and what I never hear is, we're looking at the middle class to try to help the taxpayer out in some way. I'm not, that's not really a criticism, except that I just wish the focus would be, some of it would be on the people that are paying the freight. Now, some of these issues that were brought up, I'll just quickly go over. The E B T thing, I think is a disgrace. I think it's absolutely absurd. It's semantics that they can't buy cigarettes and alcohol when they can go next door to the supermarket and get cash out of the E B T card and go across the street and buy the alcohol and cigarettes. So that's the kind of reform I'm looking to see. I'm looking to see that you don't get cash. You know, I'm old enough to know that when people were down and out, you used to get blocks of cheese and butter and peanut, cans of peanut butter, and you didn't get a plastic card and load it up every month with thousands of dollars in food stamp money and cash access. So that's all I want to say about that, because I can go on forever about that. But that's the kind of reform I want to see where these pieces that, you know, we can say that we're reforming and you can't buy alcohol with an E B T card, you know, you can buy pots for your car now with an E B T card, but when they can get cash, you can buy drugs, alcohol, cigarettes, prostitution, I mean, we can go down that road, you can buy anything. Cash is cash.
No, I appreciate that. I might say though, and again, we're focused on how do we evolve the system to come into a cashless system, so-called. I remember just as a kid too, that you used to get a welfare check, and that was straight cash, once you cashed the check. So I think the current technology and the actual E B T card has evolved to make it much more restrictive than it actually has ever been. We want the program to have the utmost integrity that it can. But it's really definitely something, it's hard to say that those folks don't need access to care. By the way, the cash is limited on a monthly basis, I'm not sure of the denomination, it depends on how many people are in the family. It's not $1,000 a month that they have access to, but I think we all share the same goal, but how do you, how do you get, how do we get to that goal? And again, I think that it's, over time, the technology has allowed the system to become more restrictive, as opposed to years ago, and I know people used to come in my grandfather's store, cash their check, and it was cash. So I understand, I appreciate it.
I think what I'd like to—
We want to get there, but—
I think what I'd like to see is that the kind of scrutiny that the credit cards are under, if the technology is there to limit these things and to be crystal clear on what they're going, but we'll move on from that. The other issue I just wanted to bring up is the housing issue. And, you know, we all know that illegal aliens are getting housing before some of our veterans. And I think the dirty little secret is, they're not allowed to ask if you're a citizen when you apply for housing. I think that's the kind of legislation that I want to advocate for. That's what I want to see, is that proof of citizenship, we've got enough problems with voting registration, all you have to do is sign under the pains and penalty of perjury that you're a citizen. If you're a criminal alien, and you came here and someone tells you you're going to get more money on your E B T card if you go register the vote, so what's the penalty of pains and penalty of perjury if you've already broken the law to get here? So these are the kind of pieces of legislation I want to see pushed through, that I don't have a veteran that can't get housing and an illegal alien is getting housing before them. That's the kind of stuff I'm looking for.
I appreciate, I want to add something on that. A couple of budgets ago, my colleagues and I in the Senate made major reforms in the area of all kind of, all-state benefits, in making sure that the administering authority asked proof of eligibility for a program. And if eligibility requirements were citizenship, which they are for something like a mass health benefit, then it was a prudent step to have the administering state authority ask to show proof and verification of eligibility, i.e. citizenship. That became law in the fiscal 2011 budget. We have made another round of efforts to make sure that program integrity in those matters does exist. I want to, however, make a note on the issue of the specific of state housing benefits. There's a federal court decree from sometime in the mid to late 70s, I want to say maybe 1977, that actually the court decree does not allow that question to be asked. It's kind of out of our realm of authority to legislate that change, and, but we've talked about that. But we can have our authorities ask the relevant questions of proof of verification eligibility for a variety of state benefits. We've instructed in the law for them to do that. However, that's one, we haven't been able to really get our arms around because of that funny little court issue.
So that's one that we should be lobbying our federal legislators to do something about. Is that what you're saying?
You can say that. I won't, you can say that.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, I know you have another committee meeting. Senator, I want to thank you also for coming here, you always do, and I know you have Revere on your mind quite a bit, now that you have all Revere too, so I think the people are lucky to have you. But I just want to make a comment more than anything else, because you touched on a few things that are true to my heart, senior citizens, the home care, and early childhood. These are people that can't take care of themselves, basically, they have to look for you, the family members, or other thing, outside things, and sometimes they go without quite a bit, the seniors, because they have to make choices that no one really would like make those choices. So I'm glad to see you put a lot of time and effort into those things, and the veterans also, that were second to none in our state compared to other states, we treat them with the dignity that they should be. And the fourth thing is, basically, you mentioned, it was jobs. You know, how do we get this economy better? How do we get people off of, you know, low income, and how do you get them off the welfare and everything else? Get them jobs. There's no question that jobs deter crime, jobs deter poverty and everything else. So it's, I'm glad you mentioned it, and you said it yourself, the jobs. But there's one other thing that you said too, that, so you mentioned the middle class, and you touched on it, again. You worked hard, and it's not a good choice to give gas increases out three cents, which is, you mentioned, how much would cost an average person, $38 a year, because that is spread across the whole state. I mean, we get stuck with the M W R A, you know, western part of state has none of that. It seems like we're always getting stuck with it out here, and we have the power of legislation, we don't have the numbers. And unfortunately, this here, with a gas tax that's spread out to the western part of state, they have to travel more than we do. So I know that you took in consideration of the middle class and hit them as least as possible and spread it out to the state. I want to thank you for that, and I think you guys did a great job there. I hope that the, now you have joint committees together, the House and the Senate, that maybe we get a little more local aid to the cities. But that being said, I want to thank you again, the people of Revere want to thank you. It's good to let them know what's going on and, you know, how we're faring in the state and everything else in the cities. I want to thank you again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Councilor. I appreciate you bringing that up again. I failed to mention that when Councilor Zamburo spoke. You know, we do view the choice that we made as protecting the middle class in the direction that we went with transportation finance, you know. I believe some of the, again, some of the raw data and the governor's proposed revenue package, you know, a family of four making $60,000 a year was going to pay more in income taxes. I use that round number of over $1,000 a year more for a family of four making $100,000 gross family income. You know, so that was on our mind when we were, but in full recognition that new revenue is necessary to make investments that we need to continue to move into the 21st century, and particularly with transportation education. So we're trying to do that in as small a disruptive way as we can for families that we know are still trying to make ends meet at home.
Thank you, Senator. Three things I want to just bring up, and I don't think they require a large response, but we're looking for some favors here for the city. Number one, I'm glad, I'm glad Chapter 90 is being increased by 50%. I'm ecstatic about that, because our roads are the worst, where you got the oldest roads in the state probably, in some cases. The second thing is, I'm still upset, and I know there's probably nothing we can do about it, M B T A, the surcharge. We probably have one of the highest occupancy of M B T A property in any part of the state, with Wonderland and Revere Beach and Beaumont, with the parking lots, and we get nothing out of it, we lose, lose, lose for us, we get no taxes out of it, and we have to pay surcharges on the cherry sheet to the M B T A. It's a lose, lose for us. We need something done for the future, some guidance, some help on this, because, you know, we can only handle so much, you know, we have a small community, there's only nine square miles, and probably losing a half a square mile just on M B T A property, and state property, you know, for all that matter. So that's one. Number two is the garage, the new garage, to use for winter. I know it's summertime, but you always have to think about it. Two years ago, I put in a motion requesting that the M B T A provide the usage of the new garage for the citizens of Revere during snowstorms. This year was the first year they did it, but only because the governor declared a state emergency. When we tried to get a, when it was a local emergency on a seven or eight inch storm, they wouldn't do it. To us, you know, and to the M B T A, I think it's a win-win, because it's usage overnight, and they're getting more money out of it that wouldn't be used normally by commuters. And they made us get out by 6 o'clock in the morning, even if the snowstorm was going for two days. So that's one thing I think we have to look at for the future, and with your help, we can talk to Secretary Davy to pursue that a little further than what we got this past year. And lastly, the old standby, reduced tolls. You know, if anybody, you know, we know East Boston, we, East Boston got, you know, has the two tunnels, we know Chelsea and Charleston have the bridge, but we're the ones that can get all the traffic after the fact. And, you know, we're the ones that have a backup at night and a backup in the morning. I think we deserve some of that advantage of a reduced rate. So those are my items.
If I may, on the last one, I want to, I want to say something briefly about it that we have in the transportation finance bill that we're hopefully going to see get over the goal line when it's finalized, is the issue of toll equity. So the issue, look, and I'd love to get the resident discount program for the city of Revere, and I think that Bob DeLeo, as the Speaker of the House, would love to do that as well. I think it shows how difficult, you know, my predecessor was the Senate President, the issue of the, of the East Boston North End resident discount program at the tunnel tolls was put in as mitigation when the Big Dig began back in the early 90s. Though there was, there was a point of origin that it was used, that they were the physically host communities of those tunnels in the Big Dig era, and that was, that was kind of the origin of that. Back when we did transportation reform in 2007, let me tell you, I had the fight of my life just to keep that, because there were a lot of my colleagues that wanted to eliminate it. So programmatic expansion is incredibly difficult case to make, not that we don't want to make it, not that it shouldn't be in existence, but the proliferation, where would it end? It'd be difficult to control people wanting to make a case for their own communities. So the issue of toll equity is something that I'm focused on, in trying to make sure that, as the needs will always continue for transportation finance, and it's always difficult to have the tax policy discussion, all right? We're having it now, it'd be difficult, the gas tax hasn't been raised since 1990, we know there's a significant need for transportation. The point we're trying to make in this bill is instructing the Secretary of Transportation to more aggressively pursue the concept of open road tolling, and particularly on border locations in Massachusetts and on other roads in Massachusetts. Toll other roads before you even think about increasing the tolls that my people pay right now. So we're trying to make that a part of the transportation finance bill, it's in conference committee right now. I'm hopeful that the end document will, will have some strong language in there. What's the need for the strong language? There are federal requirements in order to create a new toll road that, that the Secretary of Transportation will have to work with federal transportation authority to get their approval to toll other roads. So there is no toll increases imminent for us, that's not a worry right now, but sometime in the future, in the years ahead, we want to make sure that they're raising revenue through other means before they think about coming at us again.
Is that the all electronic tolling program? Is that similar to today?
So, yeah, the so-called open road tolling.
I just got an email on it, because I guess there was a presentation today on it.
Public meeting on it. Yeah, so the concept of open road tolling is, it's the, it's the electric eye that we all that have a Fastpass right now, I think 98% of commuters in Massachusetts actually have a Fastpass. So there are a lot of other states that have actually gone the direction of putting new toll roads on where there's no toll. Those days are gone, the day of having a toll taker, the big structures where you have to slow down and stop. A lot of states right now, they're high-speed lanes, you're on the highway and you're going 65 miles per hour, no need to slow down, the technology allows for the collection of the toll, either by a transponder or a picture of your license plate and you get a bill in the mail. Florida has a program like that, I believe they have a program like that in Indiana, Toronto. So there's a lot of places right now that are using that technology, and we're just looking to advance that a little further in Massachusetts.
With that, you know, look at the M B T A for us, I appreciate that, and I thank everybody for their cooperation, apology to Councilor Haas for going into his committee time, and we'll move right into that. Thank you, Senator. Thank you very much, Senator, for addressing us.
Thanks for having me, appreciate it.
Thank you. This is the end of the committee hall meeting for the Revere City Council. Thank you.